I want to make sure you settle down. All right, we're going to begin the meeting of the Board of Trustees at the State Bar of California. This is actually our first meeting of the new year, and I am Alan Steinbricker, the new Chair of the Board this year. To my immediate right is Sean Seleg, the new Vice Chair. And Sean and I are extremely excited about the coming year and being in these new positions. The first item of business is take the role. Madam Secretary.
Roger Chen, Ellen Truitt, Dylan Duran, Chris Maron, Chris Manning, Pachulia.
Here.
Delai.
Here.
Tom.
Thank you. We're now going to go into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 111 26 of E sub 1. And we will be in closed session for about 15 minutes, so we're getting a little bit of a late start. So for those of you on the telephone, I would call back in at 10:20. Thank you.
Welcome to Reservationless Plus Conferencing. Enter your conference. Thank you. If you are the leader, press star now. Please enter your leader pin. Follow.
Goodnight, and we are ready to proceed. For the board members or anyone speaking from the audience, if you are going to be coming up and speaking, please remember to use your microphone. First of all, first item on the agenda is a call for public comment. Is there anyone here in the room who would like to comment on the agenda for today? Seeing no one, is there anyone on the telephone who would like to comment on today's agenda? All right, then we'll move on to the Chair's Report, item thirty, and thirty dash one is the multi-year calendar of board meetings. It's informational. You've been provided a copy earlier. Does anyone have any comments, questions, or anything to discuss with that? Moving on to thirty dash two, the approval of the Board Committee and liaison assignments. I want to just talk about that briefly because there is a change in structure that we are proposing. It was first proposed by Leah and then discussed with Sean and I, and we agreed that this was a good idea. And the idea is to eliminate two of our former committees, the Programs Committee and the Finance and Planning Committee. The rationale is that with a smaller board consisting now of eleven members, the time of each member is stretched by multiple liaison assignments, committee assignments, and so forth and so on. So, number one, we are aware of the time demands, and that's important to us. But also, over the last year or so, we saw that the way that this board operated and the flow of work was with so few board members, most of them were on each of the committees, so the members would sit through first the consideration of items at the program or Finance and Planning Committee levels, and then sit through the same discussion at the board level. We believe that we can properly eliminate those two board-level considerations and discuss these issues as a board as a whole. We want to maintain board oversight over those program areas, so we have assigned board liaisons who will stay in contact with the appropriate liaison, staff liaison, to stay abreast of whatever's going on in those areas every two weeks as the chair and vice chair of the committees used to. So it's essentially replacing the chair and vice chair, who's staying on top of things, with one board liaison, who will then report back to the board anything that needs to be reported or bring to attention of Sean and me, that information. There are policy, I guess, implications in that. I think I've talked to most of you. I think that there are some degree of question or concern about that among some of the board members. So before we just merrily move on, I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to discuss this proposal, if anybody would like to share any thoughts or ask any questions or express any opinions. Renee?
Yeah, so with respect to Leah and Ellen, I do not support this. I don't think it's a good idea for a couple of reasons. So, you know, as many, as most of you know, you've probably, I don't know how many boards you all serve on, but the reason you have committees is typically to divide the workload in areas where it's not necessarily, it doesn't need the whole board to go deep on every particular subject. So you'll have a compensation committee or a governance committee. I think we're probably more similar to nonprofits who would typically have an audit and a finance committee. And the reason is you don't necessarily want to spend all the time in a board meeting to go deep on each of these subjects. So, really, to say that, oh, if we don't have the committee, you know, no one has to go deep, or no one has to take the time, what you're really saying is no, that now means that every member is, should have the obligation to go deep rather than just relying on the committee's recommendations or summary. So, so I don't think it actually accomplishes that unless you're saying that, you know, only a liaison needs to spend the time going on the financials, which I also don't think is appropriate. You know, the Finance Committee is very different from the Audit Committee. You know, I think, you know, we've talked about that before. We are about to get our first fee increase in twenty years, and we have spent a lot of time convincing the legislature that we are able to manage our financials in a responsible manner. And to say that, you know, at the same time, we don't think it's important enough to have a committee focused on the finances and it's just going to be a liaison, I don't think that's, not only is that right, it's probably not fair to just a liaison that they are fully responsible for that burden on their own. So, you know, at the same time, a corporate board would not typically have a finance committee because everybody on, that's most of what they spend their time on, is looking at, you know, financials and discussing financial performance. I don't think we want to do that as a board, but that is what we would need to do. On the subject of committees, you know, it doesn't have to be a big committee. It can be a small committee of people who are responsible, but I don't think making it just one person is, is the right thing to do. So, so I'm not in favor of that. I think, you know, modification could be, you know, it could be a smaller committee, but I don't think we should not have a finance committee.
Thanks, Renee. And I do very much value Renee's input and opinions because not only has she been on this board for quite a while, her background in business and serving on boards gives her a much deeper appreciation for how boards work best than certainly I have personally. On the other hand, we continue to disagree on this particular issue, but I do very much respect her opinion and thank her for it. Anybody else like to comment? Brandon?
So, one of the discussions that was ongoing with Leah this year was how to increase board engagement. And my opinion was that in having two individuals who maintained regular contact with whatever department or whatever committee they were on, really helped to take that deep dive with the staff, really understand the issues, and to have more contact than just, you know, one board meeting every two months. So I really am in support of having liaisons to these different areas such as appointments, programs, admissions, and the other, the other things. I don't know if maybe one way to address Renee's concern is to have more than one individual as a liaison to the finance and plant, or basically taking over the Finance and Planning Committee. I don't know if that would help distribute the workload and address concerns that Renee has. I know that we only have eleven members at this point, but if other individuals who specialize in finance and planning could come alongside Renee, perhaps that, that might lessen some of the load. But I think if, if this committee, if this board does adopt this, this plan, I think it's going to be a personal challenge for each board member to maintain that close contact, to continue to be engaged at board meetings. We've definitely entered into, I think, a different phase of this board, certainly being on it for the past four years, I've seen a lot of changes in board dynamics. I think we're at a very peaceful part of our, of kind of the different inner workings on the board, and I think that's good, but it can also lead to not taking that deep dive. Agitation can be bad, it can also be good. Not that I would ever classify myself as an agitator, but, but I think it's easy to get lulled into this complacency. And so, if we do adopt this, I say, don't get complacent, take that deep dive, and we as liaisons need to do a better job of reporting back to the board as a whole and taking leadership for what Ellen and Sean have given us domain over. So, I'm in general support, and I think that there's ways to address Renee's concerns as well.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other comments? I will say that the liaison to the finance and planning functions, I had originally asked Renee, and given her reservations about the wisdom of this approach, she may not feel comfortable in taking that on. If she is not ultimately, then Sean and I will be the liaisons to the finance group and will stay on top of that. I think it's important for boards to have a good understanding of what the staff is doing. That's our job. And not to be in the weeds and micromanaging, but to understand, and certainly in the finance area is one of the most important. So, I'm cognizant of that, and I know Sean is too. So, yes, Renee?
Sorry, I, I just want to add, well, I appreciate that you would take it on if, if I said I wasn't comfortable. I also think that is not a good solution. It's, you know, just sort of saying, okay, we'll pile on more, and then, you know, we're not really solving, necessarily solving anything. I mean, it is important that everyone on the board have an understanding of the finances, but it, I don't think is necessarily a good use of everyone's time, and certainly not the chair and the vice chair to be the only one doing the deep dive. So, I, my first preference would be that we not adopt this and that we keep a finance committee. It can be a smaller committee, and I think it's important, it doesn't have to be five or six people. Most boards, by the way, are like seven people, right? They're not eleven. So this isn't that small a board. And at a minimum, you could have, you know, well, I guess to avoid having to have formal meetings, I don't know, I guess it would have, can we have three liaisons, or does that become a de facto meeting?
If we have three liaisons, three committee members, it would be a...
Yeah, so I don't know, you know, why you wouldn't just have a small committee. I mean, I think we have this notion that every committee has to be big, but you can have, you can have a small committee and at least, like, send a message that, you know, we're pretty focused on finance, and the rest of the board didn't think it was so unimportant that we're just going to let the chair and vice chair take care of it. Like, that just doesn't seem like a good idea either, unfortunately.
So, Renee has raised important points. You know, Joanna Mendoza has, her view was that this is a positive change because it makes the board as a whole more... it makes the board as a whole more engaged in the finances. So I think there's two, two ways to look at that. But, um, if we can accommodate Renee's proposal to have three liaisons, uh, to focus on the finances, then I think that would be, that would be helpful. There's another point I want to add. Um, I don't think we have a motion on the table yet. So, uh, during the closed session, there seemed to be a consensus that, uh, the board would like me to continue to be a litigation liaison with Vanessa's office. And so, uh, that's not listed on this document. So, uh, if someone's ready to make a motion, I would invite that, um, with that modification and Renee's proposed modification.
The reason I, the reason I don't think that it does make the board more engaged in finance is because, um, what it would require would be that we spent, that we spend at the board meetings more time than we do, you know, at present, and that the time spent in the committee would have to be moved to the board meeting. I don't think that that's actually necessary. Um, and I think that there have been times when we've had to spend a lot more time on financials than we did perhaps at this meeting. So, um, I, I don't think that would actually happen. I don't think people will spend all the time on financials because you're kind of, you're saying like, we're all collectively responsible, so, you know, there's so much other stuff, like, I'm not, I'm, people just won't. So, um, you know, don't think that's, and if you're going to have three liaisons, I think you might as well just call it a committee.
All right. Is there any other comment from anybody on the board?
I would just say, you know, on reflecting on this and hearing Renee's points, I think those points are really well taken, and I think if we're going to have three liaisons, I agree, we should just have a committee. Um, I do think it's important, especially coming into this year with the fee bill and coming out of the various audits that have happened, that we do present a strong form of governance, and one way to communicate that is to actually have a committee.
Any other comments?
I think, um, if it's the board's direction, we go ahead and have a finance committee. The audit committee is, is only three people also. Um, and we also talked about moving the schedule for the meeting of the audit committee so that it's, uh, more timed to the audit cycle. Um, so that might be something we also consider with a smaller finance committee. There is the other portion of the finance committee's responsibilities per the charter, which is the planning portion, which has to do with strategic planning. I personally have not, have found that a very awkward fit. Um, I think that is appropriate for the full board to be engaged in strategic planning. So I think my suggestion is that we make this a finance-focused committee, smaller, um, and very focused on that particular aspect of its charge. Okay. So Sarah, do we need to, would it be ideal for us to be able to include the three names in the motion now? All right. So maybe we need a couple of volunteers, assuming, yes, assuming you would be on that, Renee? Yes?
Would you chair it?
Well, nothing is permanent, so if we could get off to a good start, that would be at least a good start.
All right. Mr. Chair, I would note that Mark Broughton is not on any committee, so, and he's not present, so I think we can volunteer him, right? And he can be volun-told.
Sounds like it just deserves for not being at the board meeting, right? The guy not in the room gets picked. Perfect. Uh, we need a third. Anybody?
Sonia.
Sonia. Also not here. Why not?
No, they're good, they're good people. That'd be, that's a good committee, so.
So Alan, I would make, I would make the motion then to ratify the committee and liaison assignments for the 2019, 2020 board year with a change of Sean Saleig as the litigation liaison, and then the formation of a finance committee with Renee, Chair.
For the moment.
For the moment. Mark Broughton and then Sonia Dillon.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And then Sarah, um, does this require a board book amendment if we're changing the name of Finance and Planning Committee?
It probably does.
So, uh, Brandon, would you, uh, take as a friendly amendment that the staff who's directed to, uh, prepare the appropriate board book amendment for approval at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So, yes.
And just a point of clarification, and elimination of the budget liaison from the liaison assignments. Okay.
All right. With that, um, proposed, uh, motion, um, and seconded, we would, uh, adopt all the other changes that we've made and, uh, with the same appointments and the two liaison and committee assignments and so forth as presented to you. So that would, that would be the one change. All right. Uh, may we substitute the rule?
Well, who brought the motion?
Yes, we did. Brandon and seconded by, by Ruben.
Yes, you may. Yes, you may.
May we, uh, any objection to substituting the rule? Okay. Thank you very much. Great. Is that the last thing on my agenda? Huh? Yeah. Okay. So that's the last thing supposedly on my agenda, but I do have some remarks. This is my one chance in a lifetime to be the first meeting as chair of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar California, so I'm going to take advantage of it. But I will be brief. I, uh, first of all, of course, want to thank Associate Justice Groban for, um, presiding today and, uh, giving us the oath. Very much appreciate that. I also want to thank the Chief Justice and all of the Associate Justices for appointing me, uh, both as a, uh, new member to, for a second term, uh, on the, uh, board, uh, but of course, more importantly, as chair. I also want to thank very much Jason, Leah, Vanessa, and the entire staff, uh, for all the leadership that they have provided this past year and in the previous three years that I've been on the board. We've made significant progress, uh, over the last three years towards our three primary responsibilities, uh, statutory responsibilities, I might add, public protection, access to justice, and inclusion and diversity in the, um, in the profession. And we will continue those efforts this year and as far into the future as I can see. I do want to take, uh, a couple of minutes to discuss one of those areas particularly, and that's access to justice. Access to justice, uh, has been a problem in California for a long time. The, uh, California Commission on Access to Justice was formed 25 years ago and, um, has been working diligently on this problem ever since. It's also not only a nationwide, but an international problem, and there are efforts, uh, throughout the country and, and throughout the world, frankly, to address these, uh, issues. Uh, California has always been one of the leaders, uh, in addressing legal issues, uh, and tackling legal problems, uh, and we intend to continue to do so. Not because, uh, there's some glory in being the first, but because it's important to the people, uh, of this state that we are proactive and try to, uh, ensure that we solve problems such as the current access to justice, uh, situation. There are currently about 24 million Californians who do not have access to legal services for their civil legal needs, and that's across all, uh, segments of the population, not just those in the most economic distress. The bar has a statutory mandate, as I mentioned, to improve access for all Californians. And in response to that mandate, we formed, this bar, the Board of Trustees, formed a committee last year to explore all possible ways to tackle, uh, the problem. Justice Lee Edmund, uh, agreed to chair that committee. That committee was given a very short, uh, time deadline to investigate and report on their efforts. They explored the universe of, uh, ways of tackling the access to justice problem and provided a number of their thoughts to the board, and, and upon which the board approved, uh, those thoughts to be put out for public comment, and we are in that process now. Uh, September 23rd is the last day for public comments. That, uh, those thoughts of that committee were put out in order to begin a dialogue on what might be the best way to address this longstanding problem. We appreciate, certainly I do, and I know the board does, uh, appreciate the hard work, the enthusiasm, and the creativity that Justice Edmund and her committee brought to their work. But we are only at the beginning, uh, of a long and complex process. The status now is that we are working with Justice Edmund to extend the deadline of the task force. We are, uh, aware of significant public comment that has been made during this public comment period, uh, and the need for significant future study. The board, at some point, will be presented, uh, with a decision, um, on which way to go or what to do, and my, um, thought is that it will probably, uh, agree to begin exploring at least one segment or one potential partial answer to the access problem, and that is, uh, the introduction of what I call the triple LT paradigm. That is limited licensed legal technicians, which is a, uh, an approach that has been tried, uh, in a couple of different states, uh, and certainly in other jurisdictions internationally. Uh, it has proven to have some benefit, and it does provide one-on-one legal, uh, advice to people to help solve their problems, um, uh, when they, uh, when they have need. So, uh, Sean and I look forward to working with the board on this and the many other challenges and opportunities we will have in the coming year, and there will be more to come. Those are my comments, and thank you very much. We certainly look forward to the coming year. Executive Director's Report.
I don't have a separate report. I think I will make my comments during the agenda item on the strategic plan. So I'm going to go down there to do that.
All right. Yeah, we're going to, the, um, next three items are on the consent agenda, uh, items 50 dash 1, 50 dash 2, and 54 dash 141. Uh, do any members wish to pull, uh, any of those items off the consent calendar? Hearing no such request, uh, those three items are deemed approved. All right. The next, uh, item on the agenda and last for today is item 701, the Strategic Plan Report, and for that, the Executive Director, Lyles.
Yes, and I'm joined by my team here. So this was to be the first meeting of the new board. As you all look around, you see that, um, our new board is our, is the old board, uh, for right now, minus two members that aren't here. So we are, um, going to use this as an opportunity to briefly go over where we are with the strategic plan. You all have a copy of the plan, and before I begin this, just a little bit about the format, really I'm going to go through at a very high level indicating, uh, where we are with plan objectives. There are certain objectives that we're going to highlight, and for those, we'll have their responsible members of the, um, leadership team, uh, give you that overview. We're going to do a deep dive into one aspect of the strategic plan, and that relates to the justice gap study, but we'll do that at the conclusion of, of this overview. So starting with Goal One, this was our goal, really, uh, reflecting our need to transition our structure into a purely regulatory agency after the separation of the state bar sections. These are the objectives here, and you can also see them in your handout. We've completed, uh, the majority of the work under Goal One. Obviously, you all are well aware of all the work that was done on Appendix I. We have a new, a much more streamlined, uh, board book that is up to date, and we're actually attempting to, uh, follow it now, uh, which is wonderful. Uh, we have a board administrative manual. This is an important development internally. In process, standardization of committee processes and board and sub entity training. So just the highlight here for Goal One.
Sure. Um, in terms of the board book and the board administrative manual, I had a chance to bend Alan's ear a bit last night about what mission advancement and accountability does. And a lot of what mission advancement and accountability does, my, my division, is we do a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff related to ensuring that the board meetings go well. Um, some, some of that involves planning two and three years out in terms of scheduling dates, identifying hotels where we can make bookings, but every meeting, we begin planning at least about five minute, five weeks, five minutes. It feels that way sometimes. Five weeks in advance, we have a schedule which, thanks to the, the diligent work and the attention to detail that Sarah Cohen brings to this process, we have really begun to get our arms around in terms of making it a routine standardized process rather than a scramble every time. And so this has just been a tremendous amount of work that, uh, ideally should go unnoticed. You should not see this. Um, but behind the scenes, believe me, getting the agendas posted, making sure that we're in compliance with Bagley Keane, making sure that we have agenda items that now have a new format, that have, they're complying with our standards, our style guide standards, and ensuring that those are all remediated so that we're in compliance with, um, ADA for, um, for, um, access of the documents that we post on the, on the website. It's all been, um, a lot of work behind the scenes, which is the board administrative manual, which is our staff counterpart to the board book. Um, in terms of sub entity support, I'm not going to say much about that. That's mostly in process. We're, um, pushing all of the sub entities into the paperless board agenda process so that those items will be posted online in the same way that the agendas for the board and the board committees are posted online. Um, on October 4th, we're going to have our first, um, training for all sub entity volunteers. So all of the members of the sub entities will be trained in Bagley Keane, they'll be receiving anti-bias training, and also trained in other compliance areas that, um, we're seeking to make sure that we have locked down better. Um, and I think I'm going to leave it at that for now.
So this is one where it seems, um, pretty remarkable that we didn't have this in place before, um, but the, the reality is that we didn't as an organization. Um, we didn't even have institutional, um, knowledge or ability to handle a transition of the staffing of board support, um, when Sarah came on board. It was very, very challenging. So I think it's important for you all to know that we're doing this sort of deep administrative work, uh, behind the scenes. So Goal Two, this one is really about our admissions and, uh, discipline systems. There are a number of objectives there. So where are we? We have deployed the discipline CMS Odyssey. Heard a lot about that. We've completed the workload study for our discipline system, and I think the evidence of the value of that study is that it was, in fact, the basis for the bulk of our fee increase, 19 new positions in OCTC coming directly from the workload study. Adequate funding for the client security fund, I call that completed. Um, obviously, we don't yet have sufficient funding to fully address the case inventory, but we are getting a very significant, uh, one-time increase in 2020, and we have reason to believe we will in subsequent years as well. Um, we've, uh, deployed the admissions case manag-, case management system, AIMS, and we have completed the modification of special admissions rules designed to increase access to legal services. In process, um, we have a number of things in process here. Uh, some of them are ongoing in nature, like our outreach regarding UPL, our law enforcement follow-up activities, a grant writing to support UPL. These are all things that should become institutionalized for us. Some are nearing completion, the CAPA study, you heard an update on that yesterday, uh, firm-size reporting. We put the rule out for public comment just yesterday, um, that will effectuate that objective. So making tremendous progress on Goal Two as well. Donna, give us a little overview on the AIMS.
Certainly. So, um, AIMS, our Admissions Information Management System, um, was deployed on February 28th, just in time for the, um, registration process for the July 2019 bar exam, which began March 1st. Um, so that was our hard and fast deadline that we knew we needed to meet. Um, we, um, the Information Management System handles, um, registration of law student applicants. It handles registration for the first year, uh, the first-year law student examination, um, sometimes referred to as the baby bar, um, determinations of eligibility for, uh, to sit for the baby bar or the, um, California bar exam are handled through, uh, through AIMS, moral character, uh, testing accommodation, general bar exam applications, uh, legal specialization also, um, and, and most of the special admissions rules that Leah was just mentioning that we, um, just updated is handled through AIMS. One of the, one of the special admissions rules that we adopted, that the board adopted, um, One of the, one of the special admissions rules that we adopted, that the Board adopted several months ago was the creation of a new classification called Registered Military Spouse Attorney, and we hadn't, the timing of that didn't sync up well with the development of requirements for AIMS, so we are actually adding that right now. We have a couple of modules that we're not currently using and that we will be, will be making some changes to and ultimately using as well, which is a module for banking the exam questions as well as proctor recruitment. We need to make some refinements to those in order to deploy those. Unfortunately, I can't say that, that 100% of everything is working exactly as predicted. In AIMS, we are certainly experiencing some issues that are requiring staff to spend quite a lot of time sort of doing manual verification to make sure that we are not in a position where we would present incorrect information to the Supreme Court on who is eligible to be admitted to the bar, to make sure that we are providing admittance tickets to the bar exam for everybody who is eligible for those admittance tickets and not giving admittance tickets to those who aren't. We are currently working with the vendor to scope out remediation plans to fix what needs to be fixed and to create sort of new design for those things that, that were designed as we had intended, but sort of have some implement, on an implementation basis, not quite as we, as we had hoped, and we're sort of now that we have an opportunity to look at it in action, want to make some tweaks on that. So we are continuing to make some progress with AIMS and hope to be able to report full success in short order.
And you will be seeing a budget amendment coming your way related to the AIMS remediation efforts that are needed. Another highlight on Goal Two, we want to update you on where we are with UPL.
Thanks. Good morning. So this slide actually shows a little bit about our inventory. First, I want to note that it's separated out by non-attorneys. That's what the NA means. The U cases are disbarred and resigned attorneys who are practicing law still. Of note, I think we're on track, if all goes as it has, to have 200 more cases coming into our intake unit related to this. Interestingly enough, as projected, we should be about flat, slightly less cases that actually move forward to investigations, so, which have sufficient allegations at the onset to move forward for an investigation. As mentioned previously in the meeting, we have done in 2019 three assumptions of practice, yielding over 11,000 files. One particular non-attorney was responsible for almost 8,000 of those files, so it's very impactful to the community and it's very impactful to our office when we take over some of these practices. We continue our efforts with referring these cases to law enforcement, and we have visited a number of district attorney's offices across the state, and in doing so, we've been able to, to smooth out sort of how we send these cases to law enforcement, including to those counties that we send the bulk of our law enforcement referrals so that it's much easier for us to communicate and for them to receive our information. On the second page, just highlighting some of our outreach efforts, including most recently that we've developed the Non-Arteny and Immigration Fraud Brochures that agencies can co-brand with us and print on demand, and we actually contribute to the cost of that. So we're really excited about that. We've had a number of media interviews, including with CNN, and I understand that was posted yesterday on CNN, the Spanish version of it. So our team has been doing that, and I think that they've enjoyed that quite a lot. And then a lot of social media clips that Communications has been posting. We also are posting names and the counties in which we are issuing cease and desist letters to non-attorneys, and then working in collaboration with our local partners, in particular LA County and the Department of Consumer Affairs. We are meeting with them on a regular basis to strategize cases, to build evidence in particular cases, and just collaborate overall on what we're seeing in terms of trends.
All right. Goal Three, this goal is focused on our fiscal and sort of operational integrity and excellence. Number of objectives here as well. So where are we? We have fully implemented this annual all-staff survey process. We've developed an internal communications plan. We have improved our collections efforts, as you heard yesterday. Our budget process now includes an effort whereby we review the appropriateness or ability to transfer surplus LAP funds to the Client Security Fund, and we have developed performance metrics for the organization. In Process, in process is improved employee morale. I talked about this a little bit at Finance and Planning yesterday. Also in process is the implementation of Oracle Fusion, our ERP system. Facility maintenance and maximizing the revenue that we're generating from our facilities is in process, and of course, we continue to hope for a two-year fee bill. So I'm going to take this particular highlight, which is on employee engagement. One of the things we have implemented that's been tremendously successful is a training and development program. This is a program by which staff can have an opportunity to perform in a classification higher than the one they are in and one for which they may not technically qualify or meet the MQs. We've had 26 employees participate in this effort so far, and eight of them have been promoted at the end of the process, so that is quite positive. I think that's morale and engagement when your employees stay, get to stay and see themselves growing in the organization. As I mentioned yesterday, we have begun to conduct stay interviews, putting here some of the challenges that we have. I think we have real challenges with our frontline supervision and management, and really, it's a cultural change that is needed where we are managing based on outputs, not on inputs. And the, the way I like to talk about that is it's not your, you know, how long are you sitting in your chair at your desk, but what are you doing regardless of where you're sitting? And we don't necessarily need you to be sitting at your desk. We can be more flexible and focus on what you're producing. So as I mentioned yesterday, this is a key area of focus of mine for 2020, and I think for our entire team, is employee engagement. All right, the fee bill.
Yes, Objective Three L was really related to the fee bill and the two-year fee bill, but the fee bill was to support the meaningful reforms that the Board has implemented, and so that is pending, as Leah mentioned, with the Governor's Desk. It does include funding for new staff in OCTC, nineteen new positions, certainly pay and benefits for our, for our covered employees by the MOU. Also addresses our, you know, our deficit, our operating deficit, which has been ongoing for several years. Leah did mention the significant increase in Client Security Fund funding this next year, $40, which actually equates to about $8 million that will be going into the new, new fund for that. And it also helps in our five-year plan, both for IT and, and building improvements and to build back the reserves going forward. As she mentioned, it does not include a two-year funding cycle, but certainly the State Auditor made that a recommendation going forward, and so we're hopeful that next year's fee bill will include multi-year funding.
So our next highlight is about the Oracle Fusion Cloud implementation. This is the new system that's going to manage our core business processes of HR, finance, and procurement. It is actually comprised of many distinct modules. The ones under Enterprise Resource Planning are related to finance and procurement. The ones under Human Capital Management are related to HR. From a design and configuration and project perspective, each one of these modules is almost its own distinct mini-project that then has to all come together into one functioning system. And it is important to note that, as is the case with other major system implementations, we're not just replicating our current processes with a new system, but we're taking the time to really evaluate all of our business processes and adopt best practices. This is a high-level schedule. Basically, from February to August, we have been in design and configuration mode. There have been upwards of 75 individual workshops to configure the system. We are now in the testing phase, the first portion of testing, system integration testing. And of course, that is an iterative process where testing then influences further refinements to configuration. The project is generally on schedule up until now. We have planned to move into further phases of testing and training through November and a scheduled go-live date of December. There are, of course, risks involved in any project of this size related to configuration, related to data conversion, and of course, related to schedule. So schedule does remain a risk. December four is our scheduled go-live date, but there are a few modules where we are somewhat behind schedule for various reasons in configuration or testing. So it is possible that the schedule may have to push into the first quarter of the new year. We are actively managing all of those risks, and in particular, within the Office of Information Technology, we recently created a new project management office, and we have brought on a very experienced technical project manager to help with the ongoing management of the project and mitigation of risks. The next highlight, it relates to maximum use of our Los Angeles and San Francisco buildings. In the area of property management, we have replaced, we will be replacing CBRE as our property manager, construction project manager, and real estate broker. We have awarded a contract to Cushman &amp; Wakefield. You approved that contract at the meeting yesterday. We are excited about bringing them on board. They come with a lot of experience and a lot of enthusiasm for this project. We'll be doing the transition throughout October. There are a lot of high-level things already on deck for them to get working on, including the capital improvement plan, our own internal restack, and issues of tenant leasing, and I'll address those in the next slides. Thinking about space utilization and leasing, we are very pleased that our, an existing building tenant is expanding into the last remaining vacant floor of 180 Howard Street, and we also now have a new tenant for our premier corner retail space. That's going to be Proper Foods, a very prestigious tenant for the building, so we're very excited about that. For the state bar space in San Francisco, we are working on various reconfiguration plans to be able to consolidate the bar's operations into less space. We have, that's an ongoing review for the future, but we do have two very specific goals in mind for the very short term. One would be to release some of the ground floor service space for additional retail tenant leasing, and more significantly, potentially, hopefully, releasing an entire office floor of the bar for additional tenant leasing. In Los Angeles, we have reconfiguration plans in progress to add seats to the existing footprint. Phase one is going to get underway very shortly to add about 26 cubicles and two attorney offices, and we have some plans in the works for the future to accommodate additional growth in OCTC.
And I'm just going to jump in really quickly to say that reconfiguration and restacking of the space is really in direct response to the feedback we received from the State Auditor. You may recall, we were dinged for too many square feet per employee, and so when we took a look at reducing our square footage, it became clear that one of the things we might be able to do is re-lease an entire floor for leasing. Now, reconfiguration of space is not cheap, and so I don't think we quite have the bids in yet on what it's going to cost us, but that will certainly be an issue likely to come forward to the Board.
Okay. And finally, related to buildings, is our capital improvement program. We do have a multi-year capital improvement plan in place. The 2019 projects are all on schedule. SB 176 funded most projects in our capital improvement plan for the next five years. The five-year cost of those projects is about $8.7 million. Our plan is somewhat front-loaded in earlier years, partially because of deferred, previous deferred maintenance, and also because these are continuations of projects that have been underway in 2018 and 2019. SB 176, however, annualized the cost of those projects over 10 years, so they took the $8.7 million, and the, the fee increase will yield about $800,000 over 10 years. An issue, of course, is these projects do not necessarily lend themselves to being implemented in that manner. It's not really feasible to, to break them up into pieces like that, so we are both taking another look at the overall plan now that Cushman &amp; Wakefield is in place, and we will be coming back to the Board with some funding options for the capital improvement plan as part of the 2020 budget planning process.
All right. Can you move it forward? Thanks. All right, we're going to go on to Goal Four. This is our access and inclusion goal. Many objectives here, and all of those diversity and inclusion objectives on the right really added pursuant to this year's strategic planning session, so these are new for the state bar. So what we've completed on access is we've revised the Lawyer Referral Services rules, and we have certainly supported increased funding for legal services. I call this, again, completed. It's work that really isn't going to be completed ever, but we've accomplished quite a bit in that regard. In Process, you heard about ADLS yesterday. The limited license technician objective in the strategic plan is actually being addressed by ADLS, although that was not part of the original charge to that task force. One of the options out for consideration or comment includes Triple LTs, interestingly. So the justice gap study, we're going to hear about that at the end of this presentation quite a bit. Working with the CALs and the unaccredited schools to increase reporting, if you'll recall, one of our objectives relates to retention of diverse populations in law schools, and we have data that allows us to analyze retention rates for the ABA schools, but we are not able to calculate similar rates for our CALs and unaccredited schools. So that particular effort has to do with changing or increasing their reporting requirements so that we can capture retention rates for those schools. Identification of Promising Retention Programs, related to what I just mentioned. Data collection and analysis, the attorney census data, this is this amazing dataset we now have on the demographics of the attorney population. In preparing for this, Donna had sent me a number of slides that sort of showed some of the data. I took them out because I wanted this to be a fairly brief presentation, but I realized that we have not presented it to the Board, so we need to do that so you can see the dataset in full, and Donna's going to talk about it a little bit more later. And we also are working now with the Judicial Council to complete the toolkit on judicial diversity. You'll recall many discussions we've had about who's the appropriate owner of the judicial diversity work, state bar or the Judicial Council. The Judicial Council has taken the lead now on the creation and promulgation of a toolkit on judicial diversity, and we're supporting that effort.
So a couple of areas to highlight, starting with the increase in the legal services funding that we have been able to deliver over the past couple of years. If you take a look, you can see that the IOTA revenue has increased 300% over the past several years. 14 million in 2017 was the amount that was distributed to roughly 100 legal services agencies in 2019. That amount is $55.6 million. On top of the IOTA revenue, obviously, we are also distributing equal access fund money, and in, in 2019, that includes an additional $20 million in equal access funding for homelessness prevention, with, which state bar staff worked very quickly, on very short notice, to implement the Governor's objective to provide this additional funding, and were able to get $15 million out the door in formula funding. And as well, we have now on the street an RFP for the final $5 million of that funding, which will be considered shortly and be granted by the end of the year. But let's talk about some of the ways that we've gotten to that increased IOTA revenue. There's been, obviously, the market has improved, interest rates have improved, but staff has also done some considerable work with the, with the banks that hold the IOTA accounts. Helen Hong presented to you at the last meeting about a proposal for a leadership bank program to further increase the interest that we get. Currently, financial institutions hold about $5 billion in IOTA deposits across the state. The top, the 20 banks with, that hold the largest deposits, hold 86% of that money. The top, the 20 banks with, that hold the largest deposits, hold 86% of that money, so the top 20 banks hold 86% of that $5 billion. We proposed to the board and got approved, pursuing a leadership bank program, which we plan to launch shortly, this fall, that would incentivize financial institutions to pay the highest possible rate, which is the established compliance rate, which is currently, or was before recent activity, about 1.7%. If we had all of the top, all of the top, our top 10 financial institutions moved over to that established compliance rate, we would be looking at about $23 million in additional IOTA revenue. So, we are creating this leadership bank program to just provide some incentive for folks to provide that rate. We would highlight them on our website, identify those, them as preferred financial institutions, and who doesn't want to get that recognition. Another highlight on our diversity and inclusion objectives, of which there are many, Leah talked about the attorney census. We had about 125,000 attorneys that responded, and as she mentioned, we have some incredibly rich datasets, things that can be mined probably for years to come, and the many different ways to slice and dice the data. But we are not waiting for those years to come. We are moving as quickly as possible to, to sort the data and figure out what it's telling us. We have published a couple of bar briefs, which highlight some of the, some of the data from, from that, and we are having a summit on September 24th. We currently have about 40 to 45 registrants for that summit. As diversity and diversity and inclusion officers around the state have been invited, the representatives of affinity bars that attended last year's first diversity summit, members of COAF, and some of the members of the board as well, will be taking a deeper look at some of that data and identifying, talking about what works and what doesn't, and what does the data show us, and, you know, what is it, what is it that, that the, that the attorney population looks like, and how is it that we can improve retention? What is the data really guiding us toward? One of the big things that the board talked about when we set the new diversity and inclusion objectives is that we really lack data for a lot of the work that we have done in the past, and what we need to do is, is using the data, figure out what the right interventions are, right? We can focus efforts in a lot of places, but we want to, we want to know what the data is telling us. Where, where are people leaving the profession? Why are they leaving the profession? Is it in firms? Is it small firms, big firms? Is it, is it, you know, what are the demographics of those, of the people who are leaving or less satisfied? So, we can really help the diversity and inclusion officers and others to implement the right interventions, to really stem that tide and reach our ultimate goal of having an attorney population, that, a diverse attorney population that matches the diversity of the state. One of the other things we'll be talking about that, at that diversity summit, is a statewide report card, which is one of our objectives, to provide a report card on the profession. We've looked at various options, and we'll be sharing that with the board as well, to really give a, a quick look at what the, what the diversity in the profession is looking like, and it's something to measure ourselves against in future years. And then the, one of the, the other items that we have on our, we have as an objective is taking a look at the MCLE elimination of bias requirements and considering some changes to that. We are talking through our Council on Access and Fairness of increasing the number of hours that are required for elimination of bias, from one out of the 25 hours that people are required to do for MCLE every three years to adding a second hour, so two hours of that. Having one of those hours, really focus on implicit bias, including bias-reducing strategies that can be implemented, and also talking about, well, what are we going to do to help attorneys be able to get that second hour of elimination of bias? Some of those credits are pretty hard to come by, and as we have been rolling out more on our e-learning platform, we're looking at the, recommending that the State Bar offer through our e-learning module, one of those, one hour of MCLE credit that would be available free of charge to attorneys, so we can ensure that they get some of this important training.
All right, so last is Goal Five. Goal Five is mostly about communication, external communication. So, I'm going to do something a little different here. We've completed a number of objectives under Goal Five. Improved relationship with the courts, I counted as completed. It's something that's underway, really happening out of Melanie, Melanie Shop outreach and site visits with Superior Courts. I think it was seven so far this year, seven of the largest in the state. So, it's underway, ongoing, but I want to use this as an opportunity to show you some of the really cool things that I think have been happening in communications. So, this is our UPL at work. Melanie mentioned some of this, but I'm just giving you some screenshots to talk a little bit about what we're doing. First of all, we've increased accessibility, not just for UPL, but for all of the public by enabling complaints to be submitted, not just online, but in six languages. We have multilingual new consumer pamphlets. You can see what they look like there. We have the print-on-demand. Melanie mentioned this. This is what it looks like. I think I asked that a link to this be sent in one of the board blocks, so you can see that you access it, you type in your password, and then you can print our consumer pamphlets. And as Melanie mentioned, the partners that print these are able to insert their own logo on it. So, this has been a really wonderful thing that's been implemented. Social media posts in English and Spanish. Our social media game as in, overall, has really increased with the onset of our new communications team, but certainly having bilingual posts is. We run these Twitter, LinkedIn, and Facebook. Well, we have our staff, communication staff here. We have metrics, we have some metrics here, and happy to have somebody come up or, yeah, Louisa, where are we running them?
We're running them on Twitter, LinkedIn, Facebook, on our own feed.
On our own feed. All right, so we're, do we have a metric in here on our number of followers?
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll get to that. Melanie also mentioned CNN, so here you can just see some screenshots about what, what this looks like, our media coverage. Efforts to educate all stakeholders on State Bar initiatives. So, we've got a number of things going, and they involve all of these different stakeholders that we are reaching out to and communicating with in different ways. For example, we just started this year pursuant to the board's direction on Appendix I, a quarterly newsletter that goes out to the law schools. We hadn't done it before, and I think it's been very, very well received. That's an e-newsletter to the law schools. The Attorney Practice Analysis, just giving you an example of how we used media to try to generate interest and participation in the practice analysis. You heard yesterday that we had between the traditional survey and ESM about 16,000 respondents. So, we use social media. We had a video campaign for this one. We used Instagram because we really wanted to reach young and new attorneys. ADLS, been hearing a lot about it. What was unique here is creating an infographic to support the public comment, really trying to use multiple modalities to get information out about this effort and make rather dense material more accessible. More on ADLS. So, in terms of metrics, I'm going to go to the next one, so we can take a look at our followers. So, here you can see 3,000 Facebook, I can't see the far left, so the blue is 2018, the green is 2019, Twitter and LinkedIn. So, it's growing. We have, what do you see, 10,000 Twitter, 16,000 LinkedIn, and then we are also measuring our traffic. What does the traffic mean exactly?
It just means like the number of people that reach the ad house.
Okay. So, we're following, we're monitoring that, and that's, that's it. So, let's talk about Renee, when you're saying, are we just posting on our own feeds?
Yeah, I mean, I presume that some of what you're posting is sort of increasing awareness, and I would assume that many of the people who most need to know about some of our services are not following us, right? People here probably follow us, but someone who might need to know that, gee, if you have a problem with an attorney, go to the State Bar is probably not on there. So, I, you know, it would be great if we were doing some, you know, paid posts on, in places where some of that audience might be.
And we, we are doing some paid posts, so I think, talk about that further at a subsequent meeting, because I don't see you guys running up here to explain what we're doing. So, we will do that and get that information out, but I know I've approved budget for paid posts, so it has been happening. All right, so with this, we're going to transition to the portion of the strategic plan update that is focused on the Justice Gap Study, and we'll have a new group of folks up here. Let me, before I do that, just ask if there are any questions or comments on this portion of the strategic plan.
I have a question, going back to Donna's presentation on the increase in the IOTA funding and the subsequent legal services augmentation of those budgets. How will we know and when will we see how that translates into more people in the public being served, or more difficult cases being handled? Where, where do we get that information, and when can we expect it?
So, we, every year, we, we, when we have our applications for our IOTA funding and our equal access funding, we get data from, from our 100 or so recipients of that funding, and we ask them to report. Just two years ago, I think, we switched to a new reporting methodology where they aren't just reporting, we had 1,000 brief counsel and advice, but instead, we switch to reporting of main benefits, things like we were able to delay or prevent eviction or foreclosure for 4,500 people. We were able to get a restraining order for this many people. So, really sort of a reporting that, that really is sort of focused on the, the benefit that's produced to the consumer. So, we get that data annually. I think it's coming, it comes in, in April of each year, and so those numbers will, we would expect to see those numbers potentially changing as you, if they are able to serve more people. We won't, you know, likely see complexity in those numbers, but we would certainly see if they are able to serve more individuals. With the additional $20 million that was added through the governor's budget this year, one of the things that we ask the programs to report on, and this will be done in 2021, is not just, not the main benefits for all of the money, but to actually tie it to demographics of the population served. Right now, the main benefits that they report for all of the other funds aren't tied to the demographics. They can report holistically on the demographics of the people they serve, but not tie how many people of, which particular demographic categories received restraining orders or eviction prevention or delay, but they'll be doing that for the $20 million as a sort of our inroad to ultimately having that information tied to all of the main benefits that, that get reported. So, we do expect to see some of, some of that information coming through. One of the difficulties, though, is when you have, when you have substantial increases that are sudden for legal services, and there isn't a comfort level that these are sustainable, right? Because some of it, so much of it is tied to the economy, and what if the interest rates go down? To go from 14 million to 55 million over a two-year period, folks are certainly reluctant to hire huge numbers of people to only potentially have to fire them, you know, short-term after, when the amount of money that they get is significantly reduced. We try and protect against that by having a significant reserve in the IOTA budget. That was one of the things that we had presented to you all in, in July. With the 55 million that's going out, we're still maintaining a reserve of 29 million, so we'll be able to buffer against significant cuts. But as a result of sort of the, you know, the significant increase the past two years and the sort of nervousness about, do I hire new people? What do I do? We also see people spending the IOTA funding on really important things that will help them now and will help them in the long run, but that may not register in, in data immediately, so case management systems, right? There are a variety of infrastructure needs that they may have that are really important needs, and they, they are using this money for fear that some of it is one-time, frankly, to be able to support those infrastructure needs.
Well, my answer, Reuben, is going to be slightly different in that it's a great question to segue us to the Justice Gap overview, because I think what the Justice Gap does enable us to do for the first time, the report and the study, is to have a baseline and a benchmark. This is what our current funding level is able to do in terms of coverage. What percent of folks with a civil legal need are actually able to get services, and services specifically from legal aid or elsewhere? So, this is our baseline. So, we'll be able to see over time, does that vary with varying funding levels? One would hope it would, although for reasons Donna mentioned, it may not, but I think it's a very powerful tool now that we will have as the state, is that baseline.
Donna, I think maybe we've done some of this, but the problem that we're talking about, you know, not wanting to commit funds, and that's pretty typical when anything that's grant-funded, but why don't you issue, you know, issue the money as like a three-year grant or a four-year grant? So, it's not permanent, but at least people can plan on it, you know, over a period of time, rather than, you know, these, these spikes, just a thought.
Yeah, so we, we continue to evaluate and reevaluate the ways that we can do this better. I'm not sure that, I'm not, we'd have to sort of look back at the statute and the limitations on sort of how we could, how we could package it, but because so much of it is dependent on how much we can sort of get, we will be able to collect the following year. It used to be that, well, we've, we've changed the schedule of how, of how we distribute the IOTA money, and so it used to be very dependent on exactly the dollars that came in. This year were exactly the dollars that went out that same year. And so, we created a sort of smarter process of doing it that gives us a little bit more flexibility in, in that, in that vein, but it's also sort of why we have that $29 million in reserves, so we can sort of help address some of these potential sudden drops in, in IOTA revenue that could be attributable to a change in the, in the interest rates.
All right, Justice Gap.
I'm more comfortable with that my wife is a lefty. Sounds good. Good morning, everyone. I'm Helen Hong. I'm the Director of the Office of Access and Inclusion, and I'm with Dag McLeod, and we're happy to be presenting an update on the Justice Gap Study. So, as you all have been discussing, the Justice Gap Study really goes directly to our mission to support greater access and inclusion into, into the legal system, and we have a specific strategic plan goal related to the Justice Gap to be completed. So, the Justice Gap seeks to understand three major areas. One is how to, how to support access for low and moderate-income Californians. Two, how to prioritize limited resources, and to how to understand the, how the cost of legal education affects access to justice, and if a loan forgiveness program could influence career choices. I want to let you all know that I'm approaching this project not because it's fascinating, but this is my personal passion and experience. I went to law school to be a public interest attorney. I graduated with over six figures of debt. My starting salary as a public interest attorney was $38,000 a year in 2004. I was a legal aid professional for 10 years, including being an executive director, constantly trying to prioritize resources to serve our clients in the community in desperate need. So, with that, what is the Justice Gap? It's the difference between the civil legal needs of low and moderate-income Californians and the resources to meet those needs.
I'm going to talk a little bit about how we measure the Justice Gap. Historically,
Historically, um, work like this has been done by Legal Services Corporation. And what they looked at was, they looked at people who had already found their way to legal services. They'd taken their legal aid providers that they funded, and they said, look, let's, let's find out how much of the need that's coming in the door you are able to meet. And then we'll look at that need that you're not able to meet, and we'll call that the justice gap. So by looking at that, the problem was, they weren't getting at those people who quite never, never quite got to the door. What about those people who never sought assistance? In 2017, Legal Services Corporation commissioned a survey to begin trying to understand that bigger gap, the gap outside of those people who had already found their way to legal aid, and to try to understand the legal problems, the civil legal problems, justiciable legal problems that the public had that may not have ever found their way to legal aid. So, um, what we're looking at and what we've replicated in the study that we're doing is we're looking at more than just the gap of people who weren't able to have their needs met after they'd found their way to legal assistance, but rather examining the bigger problem by conducting a survey of Californians. We partnered with the National Opinion Research Center out of the University of Chicago, and we've conducted a survey of almost 4,000 Californians to understand the legal problems that they had in the previous year. What we found, and Alan referenced this a little bit earlier, is that in the previous year, over half of all Californians had a civil legal problem of some kind. Taking a moment to just step back and think about what that over half of Californians, we're talking 40 million Californians roughly, over half, about 22 million Californians who had a civil legal problem of some kind, out of which, only about a third found their way to some sort of legal solution to their problem. So about 7 million of the people who had a problem found some, sought and found some legal solution to it. But that leaves over 15 million Californians who never found their way to any kind of legal solution for their problem. We're going to talk a little bit more about the data on, on who these people are, what type of problem they had, what types of resolutions they sought. But those are big numbers that were alluded to previously and that I think are really one of the most interesting and important findings from the study that we've done. Anticipating some of the findings that we'll talk about a little bit more, though, as the slide indicates, the people who didn't, um, uh, seek legal assistance for their problems, they dealt with their problem on their own, they didn't know the problem was a legal problem itself, they were afraid to pursue legal action, or they were concerned about the costs. So what this indicates to us is that the, examining the justice gap requires a more fundamental evaluation. It requires that we look at, um, much more than simply the civil legal aid question.
And so the justice gap actually includes four major parts. The centerpiece is this survey that's, that was conducted by NORC, by the University of Chicago. And it also includes a survey, uh, I'm sorry, an intake census of the legal aid organizations that the state bar funds to better understand who they're serving and what types of services are they able to provide. The second portion includes a law student survey to understand how law school debt impacts career choice. And it's also supplemented by qualitative data with focus groups from a variety of different law schools throughout the state, conducted by the Legal Aid Association of California. Thirdly, it includes a recruitment and retention, uh, a report about legal aid organizations here in California and a analysis and evaluation of the cost of law schools themselves.
So I'm going to talk a little bit more about the findings from the survey that we've, uh, looked at so far. The survey, as I mentioned, it's almost 4,000 Californians, age 18 and older. What we did was we conducted an oversampling of Californians whose incomes were below the, below 125% of the federal poverty line. That's about $33,000, $34,000 for a family of four, which is, uh, is the federal poverty line. So we oversampled those Californians so that we could have a robust sample with, which to begin looking at the detail of how lower-income Californians deal with their problems. And then we surveyed the other group regardless of income, so that we would be looking at all Californians as a whole, not just those who are below the federal poverty line. The survey also included an oversample of Spanish-speaking households, seniors, individuals with disabilities, and rural households.
And I'm just going to jump in because I'm, I'm not sure the board will recall that the 125% of federal poverty is the statutory income ceiling for eligibility to receive the, um, IOTA-funded services. So when we talk about our IOTA dollars and where we're going, those are the income-eligible clients. That's the limit, and that's why we chose the 125%.
The, the findings that we're going to review from the survey are the frequency of problems that are encountered by Californians, type of problems they encounter, severity, and the help-seeking behaviors that they engaged in to try to deal with those problems. The figure that we've been referring to, the over half of all Californians who were surveyed, and we believe that this number can be extrapolated, over half of all Californians. If you're looking at the below 125% of the federal poverty line, 60% of those Californians experienced some type of civil legal problem last year. 54% of Californians above 125% of the federal poverty line experienced some type of civil legal problem. If you look at the, the number of problems that were reported, what you'll find is that there's not a lot of difference between Californians above and below the federal poverty line, except as you get out to, um, the extremes where people reported experiencing six or more problems in the previous year. And that's where you see that the differences really start to expand and where, um, being a low-income California, Californian carries with it a lot more, um, issues that are, uh, that make your life a lot more difficult and where there might be a civil legal remedy of some kind than, uh, for those Californians who have a few more resources. 23% of Californians, uh, below the, uh, federal poverty line had six or more problems. That's on the right-hand side over there, compared to only about 11% of Californians who were above the federal poverty line.
Do you have the survey data by income? I mean, obviously, you had it at some point to get the above or below, but do you have further breakdown?
We do have some.
I mean, I'm just, it would just be, I'd be curious, the, the poverty level is so low, and there's also a pretty big group of people above that that I would also argue it's difficult to, to fund legal services. So it would just be interesting to say, you know, I don't know if it's 50,000 or 70,000, but even if, you know, if you're making 60,000 a year, it's hard to pay a $10,000 legal bill or even a 5,000.
Right. So we, we do have the data. We've been working closely with the National Opinion Research Center to, um, understand the weighting scheme. When you look at these numbers, you can't just, um, add them together and divide by two to get the, the statewide average because of the, the weighting issues, the oversampling. A guy in our shop in the Office of Research and Institutional Accountability has been working very closely with, uh, NORC to ensure that we can go in and then do the subsequent analyses that we would like to do. And I anticipate we will be doing that. One of the challenges with making finer-grained evaluations of the income levels is that your N starts to decline pretty rapidly, and so then you start struggling a bit to, to tease out some of the differences.
It would just be, you know, broad, like, and if you look under 75,000, it's still, you know, pretty high.
It's, it's really important, Renee, and, um, we've been articulating this as, as an effort that's going to tell us how far up the income ladder the justice gap goes. Because I too believe it goes quite high. And it does speak to these issues of a potentially untopped market for lower-cost legal services, right? Because these folks are not going to be eligible for free legal services. So it may be something that after our ORIA folks go through the data, we determine that we need to do an additional survey just of the over 125 percenters so that we can get enough data in order to answer that question.
Has there been any discussion about, um, getting a legislative fix to that 125% threshold?
Sean, I thought you would start laughing. We, um, this, uh, changes to the IOTA statute came up during the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission stakeholder process that we went through. That you may recall was challenging, and there was a determination that it was not appropriate to reopen the statute at this time. Although there is a consensus, I believe, that that 125% is too low. There are concerns about opening up the statute altogether. Further, even at that 125% level, you'll see, um, I think you'll see in this presentation, but certainly in the full report, we aren't able to fully serve all the folks at that income level. So I think there's some legitimate feeling, um, you know, about why would you raise the income level? You're just going to create an even larger population that you can't fully serve. So.
I do want to also clarify that there are exceptions to the 125% of poverty for seniors, people with disabilities, or on, um, social security disability as well. So when we look into.
Oh, Helen, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
So, uh, just to follow up on what Leah said, there was consensus in the legal services community about opening the legislative process and having unpredictable outcomes. And so, given how strongly that sentiment was in that community, that's why the, that's what led to that decision.
So, following up with Renee's question about also, what are the problems that people are facing? What we find regardless of income, that the top three problems tend to be clustered under health, finance, and employment. But just to give you a flavor of what types of problems these are, I wanted to just give some examples. For health, the questions refer to inability to access or secure health insurance or issues with debt collection and financial assistance related to medical procedures. For finance, that was, uh, getting denied for credit after being a victim of identity theft or being the target of unfair lending practices or internet scams or problems with debt reduction and/or credit repair services. For employment, they tended to be wage and benefit issues as well as denial of workers' compensation or unsafe working conditions. Now, the difference between, there are people that all say that they have many problems. But then the follow-up is which problems have a severe or substantial impact on your life, which then impacts your help-seeking behavior. And so here, we see a difference between higher-income and the federal poverty line Californians. So I'm going to just talk about the ones above 125 because the next slide will talk about lower-income Californians. So we see as number one are veterans' issues. And this is specifically related to discharge status, receiving VA benefits, the ability to get your job back once you come from deployment. Then you see child in custody being number two, and then family law issues being the third. Domestic violence is within family law under that category. Now, when you look at low-income Californians, you see that these top, uh, I believe, eight, um, problem areas are the areas where they are most likely to say that these issues affect them very much or severely. And as you can see, it's topped with custody and children issues, then veterans, and then income maintenance. And income maintenance, uh, refers, uh, to trouble receiving the earned income tax credit, receiving social security income or disability benefits, or housing benefits, or, um, the determination, the denial or termination of SSI, SSDI, or social security survivor benefits. Now, as Dag mentioned, um, low-income Californians only receive help or only ask for help for 30% of the problems that they're experiencing. But what we see is the families that are above federal poverty, and as Dag mentioned again, these are families with, families of four with an annual income of $33,000. Only don't have a, uh, market difference in terms of their help-seeking behavior. So when we dig into why, as Dag mentioned, these are the main reasons. But you can see, for 25% of Californ, low-income Californians, they don't even know whether or not the problem was legal. And I think a common and I think relatable experience is, if I'm experiencing domestic violence at home, my first thought is not, this is a legal problem, even though we know that there's, there may be legal solutions to that issue. And so you see there's help, there's self, self-helping, seeking behavior, is either dealing with the problem themselves, not knowing or fearing pursuing legal action. And then the fourth last issue is worried about cost. And cost is very similar to higher income. It's not, it's the top, the fifth reason. Now, when we see this, though, when low-income Californians seek legal help, the biggest source of help are legal aids, by almost 40%. Then it's a paid attorney, followed by a nonprofit organization. And notably, 16% receive help from the courts. And I do want to note that the pro bono and legal hotlines could be related to legal aid or be completely separate, but this is the sources of seeking, um, the resources that people seek when they seek help. So, um, these numbers are slightly off because we had updated data since the deck was made. But you'll see that, um, and now this is based on the feedback that we've received from the legal aid community of who is actually coming to their door or calling their lines, asking for help. So based on projections, low-income Californians are going to be asking for help for 450,000 legal problems in 2019, nearly half a million. And legal aid will be able to provide some supportive, some form of help for about 59%. But they'll only be able to resolve, fully resolve, meaning that they'll be able to solve the problem for about 30% of the problems that are even coming to their door. So we're seeing that 30% are actually seeking help, and of that, we're only able to solve 30%. That's a very small subset of what low-income Californians are facing. And if you look, oops. Uh, this goes to Ruben's question about, well, who are they helping and what are they doing in terms of the resources that we're giving? This is, uh, the case closed summary data from 2018. So we see about a third of all the cases that legal aid closed, and these are organizations that the state bar has supported, go to housing and immigration issues. And housing in this category includes rental housing and foreclosure issues. And I think, uh, and then the, the next one is health and long-term care issues. And I know miscellaneous is up there, and so just to explain what miscellaneous captures is wills and estates, Indian tribal issues, license issues related to autos and others, taxes, torts, and prisoners' rights.
To some extent, you can think about the, the evaluation of the justice gap as a question of supply and demand. We're trying to understand what the demand is in terms of the need for legal services and the need for legal assistance more generally. And on the supply side, we're trying, trying to understand the availability of legal services to meet those needs, the availability of other services that might meet those, uh, those civil legal needs. What we've discussed so far is the NORC survey, which allows us to look a little bit, look at the demand generally. Then the intake survey, which allows us to talk a little bit about the supply, the supply, supply specifically on the legal aid side. Another part of the justice gap study is looking at the prospective, um, supply of legal aid services. In particular, trying to understand what is it that encourages people to go into civil legal aid? Why don't people go into civil legal aid in their careers? And we were also directed, and think that it's important, to look at the impact of student loan debt on, um, career decisions of law students. So, um, this other component of the justice gap study relates to the survey of law students. We have created a survey, um, that was emailed in early September to about 7,000 of, uh, 7,000 students enrolled in law school in California. They're registered with the state bar, so we're able to take advantage of the fact that we have that email address. As of two days ago, we'd received, I think it was 1,440 responses, so we're off by 40 there. But I'm sure the number is higher now. Um, we're receiving responses, sending rema- We're receiving responses, sending reminders. We've also sent a reminder, and sent a separate link to the deans of the law schools, encouraging them to encourage their first-year students to reply, because not all first-year students are registered yet with the state bar. So we're looking forward to seeing the results of that. Preliminary findings that we've already just run show that 75% of law students indicated that they have student loan debt. This is out of that 1,400 students who'd responded to date. Of those students, they, their expectation is that they will be graduating with about $136,000 in law school debt, and about $150,000 in total debt.
And just for context, in 2019, the average attorney salary for a legal aid attorney, this is not starting, just the average, is $65,000 a year. And so this goes to Ruben's comment about, you can provide more funding for legal aid organizations, but if there aren't any applicants for those positions, that also impacts access to justice as well.
So, for the final report and next steps, we're going to be issuing a final report before the end of the year. I think that it's gonna be a great, I think the timing's gonna be great in terms of informing the strategic planning process in January. The board will be meeting for two days in January, and that full report will not only have been released, but will, I think, there will have been enough time to fully digest and think about what the findings are and how they relate to other initiatives. They're underway at the bar. And that's the final bullet there. It needs to be considered in conjunction with other state bar initiatives to improve access to justice.
Thank you very much. Terrific report, and very informative. Do any of the members of the board have any questions? Brandon.
Now, with the report, are there going to be any proposed action items for this board to consider?
Yes, each section will have policy recommendations and possible other areas to research or to find, to, to follow up in terms of having more research for recommendations as well.
And then with the new structure of the board, is this report going to filter through any of the liaisons? Any specific liaison? Would that go through programs?
You have an access liaison and a, and two programs liaisons. I'm sure both of them will have their eyes on this, and of course, the full board.
Any other questions? Well, Dag, Helen, thank you very much. Tremendous.
And I, I just wanted to add that one of the very interesting things, I thought I saw it in an earlier iteration of the PowerPoint, is that for help-seeking behavior, we also have data on where people go for help. You had some of it up there, Helen, but we didn't have the going online. And so we do have that information, which I think is very useful and relevant, given other conversations that we're having, and what they go online to do, to try to do. So.
Great. All right. That concludes the agenda for this board meeting. Does any member have any comments, questions, anything pending business? All right, then the Board of Trustees is adjourned. There is a meeting this afternoon, beginning probably at 1:20, for the Government and the Public Interest Task Force. Those members who are on it, be back here, expected at 1:20. For those of you on the telephone, if you call in at 1:20, it's a, we're gonna be waiting for one of the members to arrive, so we may not start as right at 1:20, but we will be starting shortly thereafter. All right? Meeting adjourned.
This is the meeting of the government and the public interest task force. It's our first meeting of this new year, looking for a report early next year. And I would now ask Mr. McLeod to call the role.
Highland Chen.
Here.
Juan Hila Cruz here.
Debbie Manning.
Here.
All right. This is a formation session, if you will, to identify those tasks that we believe this task force should undertake, just by way of very brief review for anyone who may be attending or listening on the telephone. This is a follow-up to a very important task force that was issued its report in 2017, which led to the Appendix I review and a number of actions that were taken subsequent to that. So I believe that the staff has some recommendations or thoughts for stimulating our discussion of where we may want to go, and I will ask Leah Wilson or Dag McLeod to take it from here.
So we've discussed internally three potential options, and there's always a fourth, which would be other, if you choose to reject the three that we discussed internally. But effectively, the three options would be, first, we could do a look back, take a retrospective look at what's been accomplished in terms of these, the reports and the work that the bar has done.
This is the meeting of the government and the Public Interest Task Force. It's our first meeting of this new year, looking for a report early next year. And I would now ask Mr. McLeod to call the role.
Highland Chen?
Here.
Juan Hila Cruz here. Debbie Manning. Dr. Lang.
Here.
Here. All right. This is a formation session, if you will, to identify those tasks that we believe this task force should undertake, just by way of very brief review for anyone who may be attending or listening on the telephone. This is a follow-up to a very important task force that was, that issued its report in 2017, which led to the Appendix I review and a number of actions that were taken subsequent to that. So I believe that the staff has some recommendations or thoughts for stimulating our discussion of where we may want to go. And I will ask Leah Wilson or Dag McLeod to take it from here.
So we've discussed internally three potential options, and there's always a fourth, which would be other, if you choose to reject the three that we discussed internally. But effectively, the three options would be, first, we could do a look back, take a retrospective look at what's been accomplished in terms of these, the reports and the work that the bar has done to satisfy the demands, the recommendations that are made in the reports, and what impact it's had. A second option would be prospective, looking forward and looking at what the bar needs to accomplish in the future in the areas of governance. I think that that one, one of the components of that that we had discussed internally was the possibility of incorporating the work of ADLS and the Justice Gap research as two, I think, real significant bodies of work that are going to be coming together in the near term and that could inform the work of the governance in the Public Interest Task Force. Third option would, it's really sort of going in a very different direction from the first two. The first two are rather global in their, in their perspective and would be looking, I think, very high level at the work of the board. The third is more into the weeds of, you know, how does the board ensure that the time that the trustees spent is spent at the appropriate level, that it's spent looking not at the minutia of more ministerial functions that the bar is often engaged in in terms of maybe suspending people for noncompliance with mandatory continuing legal education or other components of the work that the bar does, but rather really focusing on those matters that are at risk at a level of policy and are strategic for the future of and the functioning of the state bar. So those are the three main options that had been discussed in internal deliberations. And I put four up there in case we wanted to either find some combination of those or some other alternative altogether.
I'm not sure if we provided the statute.
So I have a hard copy that I, I think is on the fifth floor. The statute is right here.
Okay.
And.
The only thing I wanted to point out, one, it gives us tremendous flexibility as to what we do, and two, our only hard and fast deliverable is a report that will be due May 15th of 2020. So that's what we have to keep in mind. When I put the options back up.
I'm, I'm setting up a Dropbox account right now, which has the previous reports in it and a, this statute governing the public, governance of Public Interest Task Force, so that as soon as that link is set up, I'll send it to everyone so you can have just in a single place, previous reports and, and the statute.
Are there any of these options that particularly excite any of the members of this task force?
Well, I think for me, it's just understanding what the task force and Appendix I, I think you alluded to, understanding that and what happened in the past, to not duplicate the same efforts and moving forward. I think that's very helpful. I think understanding and incorporating the ADLS and the Justice Gap research is a great idea. Obviously, it's fluid, so I think maybe as we continue to discuss how we want to move forward in 2020 and the report, I think there's going to be some changes, but it's fluid, I think. And I think I really, so coming from the government sector and nonprofit sector and getting in like a governing board and getting into the minutia, I think that should be for staff as well. So I love that recommendation, maybe that comes in consent versus having a full discussion as a vote moving forward. But I like these options and as I get more information on the reports that have been distributed in the past, I, I think I could come up with maybe other ideas.
Well, so when, and the report goes to who, the legislature?
Yeah, it's in the statute.
Okay.
It goes to the legislature, the chief justice, I believe.
Okay. And so I guess, you know, option one, retrospective, the benefit of that would be, right, you know, they would get to see all the amazing things that we've done. To the extent we haven't done that yet, but if we feel like we've already done that and sort of confirmed for that audience what we've done, you know, we don't have to do it again. And then on two, my question would be, to what extent does that work? And I believe option two, right, what does the bar need to accomplish in the future, incorporating ADLS and Justice Gap research and the like? How, what's the overlap between what we do and the board and are we going to be called on to make a recommendation, sort of, you know?
Right, another, I mean, yes, how would this differ from the strategic plan?
Right.
So I have a slightly different view of number two, not necessarily what does the bar need to accomplish in the future, but rather really thinking about some of the issues that are coming up through the ADLS process, which is what does the practice of law, what are changes in the practice of law that the state bar needs to be informed about, keep abreast of, are going to impact our role as a regulator going forward, more of that sort of futures-looking exercise? Because right now, other than the ADLS work, we are very reactive on the regulatory side. So that, I think, in my view, is a slightly different reframing of number two, but it's very forward-looking and, you know, potentially forward-leaning. But even a landscape of the changes to the practice of law over the last number of years and what the future holds, I think that would be valuable. But it's quite different than a retrospective of everything we've accomplished.
Well, it's a good discussion. I think, let me just take one, and, well, I'll take them in order. So in terms of what was happened last time, I mean, just to recap, the last governance in the Public Interest Task Force was what I would say was very inward-looking. So we focused on the structure of the state bar and its sub-entities and whether that system was working or not. And obviously, over the past few years, we have, a number of entities have separated from the bar or in the process of separating from the bar. So our organizational chart has become more simple, still more simple, which is not to say it's still not quite complicated. So I would defer to Leah on whether she thinks it's viable to do a high-level retrospective because I think Highland made a point that it could be valuable to outsiders and our oversight stakeholders to just have a summary of that. And it might be helpful for us to kind of see where we were just a few years ago by comparison to now, but I wouldn't invest the majority of our time in that. It still may be a useful effort. The number two on perspective, I really, a perspective, I really liked the way you framed it, Leah. I also think that unlike the last task force, that's outward-looking into what's happening in the real world and what we need to do, what the bar needs to do to anticipate that and be ready for it and not simply be reactive. Because things are changing so quickly that if we wait to see how changes in the legal field and the delivery of legal services change, by the time we start working on it, it's going to be too late. So we do need to start trying to think a little more prospectively. On the third item, I'm not sure I'd spend a lot of time on that. I think that Jason did a very good job this year of making quite substantially more use of the consent agenda feature so that things that are not substantive or ministerial, which I assume that we have to do because of statute or whatever, like the MCL compliance. If we can eliminate those things, I think it's an effort worth doing, but that might be something more at a staff level principally than, than us. But I think using the consent agenda more assertively has been a way to reserve the board's time for the few items typically on our agenda that really require deep, deep and deliberate discussion. So those are my thoughts.
Well, we seem to have a developing consensus, correct me if I'm wrong, that while there is some value in one and three, that really if we're going to put time and, and effort and, and prepare a deliverable, that would be most useful for a future, well, for our stakeholders to understand issues that we think that we need to bring to their attention. Number two is where we should spend our time, if not solely our time. I can envision a report that would have some portion at the beginning of a retrospective, which would be number one, just summarizing the, what's occurred in the last three, five years and so forth with the, I think, two different GIPI reports. And, and number three is obviously more internal. I don't think most people care about how we organize our agendas and that kind of thing. There is some, I think, value in, in constantly looking at our processes and how we govern ourselves because it's, it's changeable and we always need to be aware of ways to improve it, but I'm not sure I want to spend time with a committee on that, at least as the, as the major thrust. So I guess my suggestion would be that we focus on some aspect of number two. And if I'm hearing everybody right, I think we have a consensus on that. Is that?
I think that's right, and I like the way that Leah framed it. I mean, I think that that's really helpful to help understand how it's different from really what the board is doing. You know, I like the idea of thinking how to be proactive in what we're doing as opposed to just reacting. Yeah.
My observation is that Leah has a fairly clear view of how to make this organization, the bar, the most effective, highest-performing organization that she can. And I think she has a number of ideas on how to get there. This may help bring those to paper, give them the opportunity to be vetted by, by a committee of the, of the board and so forth. So if that's what you would like to accomplish, I think we can certainly do that. Or would you like to modify that thought?
Well, I, I think it's a bit of a different focus in the sense that it's helping, I think there's a bit of an educational piece of this, to educate ourselves, the board, this organization, but also our stakeholders writ large and the public as to what is the changing nature of the practice and what are the implications? And there could be many different implications. You know, so, so I think it's a bit, obviously, there will be impacts on the organization, right? If we determine that the profession is changing, you know, it's moving in this direction and we're still over here, then we need to change as an organization. But I don't quite think that's the direct focus.
Right, no, no, no. And I, in thinking about it, I think the way I, the way I stated it was a little bit off point. I mean, I think looking into the future and trying to discern where the practice is going, where the needs are going to be, what the future role for this bar is, is really what the focus should be. I didn't mean to, to kind of slip into a number three discussion where we try to figure out how to make it a more efficient organization. So, yeah.
I.
Now, that's, but that's also a wide remit at, at the outer margins. We might have to discuss what all are we going to look at, or we just pick that up as we go?
I think one useful way of trying to narrow the focus, if, if number two is the focus, then one useful way of narrowing the focus is to think a little bit about like, well, what information would be brought to bear on the question? And is it, is it legal analysis? Is it data collection, public hearings? Is it existing reports that we already have? Because you can only write about what you've got information on, so.
There are a lot of articles on changes to the legal profession. So I see the first thing that we would need to do on the staff side is to kind of do a lit review, see what's out there. I'm sure once that's done, a few names will consistently pop up. These may be folks that we want to invite to come speak to the task force. I think obviously we want to get some data to start framing exactly what changes to the profession means. But that's my thing. I, I don't think there's legal analysis involved. That's my initial thought. But I think we need to do a little bit of that research and assessment, sort of what I'm calling the lit review, before we can come back to you with some parameters for, for number two.
I think, I mean, it, it does feel so wide-ranging because, you know, I think any of us, if you like polled us, we could, each of us has our own ideas about what it is. And I wonder if we should decide on a particular area of focus, at least, you know, broad area of focus within which there would be a number of points.
Or do we have an initial literature review and come to some recommendations from staff?
Well, let's, let's.
As to the scope. I could go either.
Maybe you could just share, Highland, the thoughts that come to your mind when you.
They're also scattered. I mean, one, so one change in the legal profession that I think has not been really addressed in any regulatory way is the rise in litigation funding. So litigation funding companies paying for litigation, what does that mean? When you've got these non-lawyers basically driving the funding for lawsuits, right? And for the decisions that get made. And that seems to be a big unregulated field, and it's starting to become much more prevalent. Another issue is really, you know, the ABA wellness pledge is something that many, many law firms are signing on to. And many law firms are now hiring in-house psychologists and therapists. It's been a big focus, mental health and wellness, with the ABA and now with law firms, and should we be playing a different role in that regard? And then, you know, certainly the CAPI study and law school skills, I think, is also something that reflects the changing nature of the profession, right? Where there isn't the same sort of, if you think back to sort of when the profession first arose and people learning in this very sort of apprenticeship model, and that's not really the case anymore, that's also a change in the legal profession sort of writ large. And then the other thought I had is, you know, do we ever take a look at how are the changes in professional responsibility rules? Do, are those changes having their intended effect, right? And the thing that comes to mind is the rule about sexual harassment and gender discrimination in the practice of law. That's a new law. We really haven't heard much about how it's doing, has it had its intended effect? Should we be doing more with respect to women in the profession or discrimination that barriers that women face in the profession? I was just reminded of this because I had a hearing in federal court the other day, and literally it was a room full of men. Like, the only people who were, I mean, it was just a room full of guys. Every practitioner in the room was a guy. And I'm like, really? Today in 2019? So just a whole bunch of random thoughts. But you can see how it sort of touches a whole bunch of different disparate areas.
Well, okay, this is sort of like a, what is, what are you calling it? Extreme of consciousness. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna channel Highland. Well, well, you know, what comes immediately to mind to me is changes in the profession since the time I've been in practice, which is almost 30 years, I'm sorry to say, that is, that I can, that's been that long and I'm that old. But, you know, being in private practice for the vast majority of those years has been an experience in being in a contracting profession. And also the segmentation of the profession in, in private practice, so that there have been huge economic changes in the practice that have basically amounted to consolidation into larger and larger firms for one segment of the market, generally a higher-earning segment of the market for lawyers and a more expensive segment for clients, and then compression of income and rates at the lower end. And then we've learned here at the board that during the same period of time, the availability of services to ordinary people, to individuals, as opposed to businesses, has dramatically receded. These developments probably have some relationship to each other. And although the comments I just made focus on the effects on lawyers, those inevitably affect the consumers of legal services because it affects how they're delivered, it affects how expensive they are, and so on. So I'm not sure that's the right topic for this group at this time, but that does come to mind. And then, of course, there's all the technological change. ADLS is looking at this, but we could look at it in a slightly different way, which is how it is changing the practice of law. So here again, coming from the world I'm most knowledgeable about, which is private civil practice, you know, as between now and when I began practicing, the career path of a new lawyer at a, at a civil law firm of any size is dramatically different than it once was. So when I started, a doctor. So when I started, a document review in a large case would mean going to a warehouse, going through hundreds or dozens of boxes of paper documents. That process, a large part of that process has now been taken over by technology and going through electronic documents like emails. So that's something that has affected how services are delivered. And I think there's even more activity on all kinds of other technology that enhances the practice of law or can be said to replace lawyers that might be worth thinking about because it affects, it affects how lawyers are trained, it affects the skill set they have and everything else. So those are just a few ideas to throw out.
Well, at the risk of engaging in stream of consciousness thinking publicly, yeah, there are several thoughts that come to mind to me. One is, we've identified and we've talked about, and it's been a longstanding problem, access to justice for people. That reflects, I think, a number of things. One is, there are an awful lot of laws that have to be complied with or that you can run afoul of. And a lot of situations, it's not, there are always going to be laws, laws against domestic abuse and, you know, crimes and fraud and breach of contract and all that kind of thing. But are we becoming an over-regulated society? It's not something that there's an easy solution to, but maybe that's part of the problem. Also, kind of, you know, we read the newspapers about, well, there's been a recent number of articles about the feudalization of California with the very wealthy elite living along the coast and a lot of other people struggling and middle class being hollowed out. Is that also happening in the legal profession? Do we have a number of very wealthy attorneys in primarily large, successful law firms in the major cities and everybody else is, or a lot of other people are struggling along even in a profession as important as the legal profession? And if so, what are the implications of that? So I don't know. I mean, these questions kind of spin off a lot of, you know, thoughts. None of them are getting me anywhere, but I think there's, there's a lot, as you look into the future, there's a lot to be interested in. So those are my only thoughts.
One of the things I'm thinking about is, we, it sounds like we should, because I think it'd be very valuable, whatever we decide to focus on, that we look at the impacts on lawyers, the profession, lawyers. We look at the impacts on the public, the consumer. And then we also look at the impact on a third party that I can't remember. But the two I can remember is lawyers, oh, the three I was thinking, are lawyers the profession, if that's different than lawyers and consumers? So that regardless of what we pick, because I think it's, it does obviously dovetail to a lot of what, with, a lot of what Adels is trying to do, or trying to take a look at, what the board really tasked them with. But it's taking it a little bit further because Adels really isn't looking at the impact on the profession or lawyers. So I, I put kind of litigation funding, the impact of technology, including some of the examples that you gave, Sean. I see this a bit different from a focus on wellness or how have new rules impacted the But maybe not. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I would add to Sean's point about how the rise of electronic documents and electronic discovery has impacted the profession and lawyers, is there's a whole class of lawyers who, all they do, like literally all they do is review documents on an electronic review platform. And they can be contract lawyers who are hired out by temp agencies, or they can be full-time employees who, that's their job. There's like a class of staff counsel, staff attorneys, they went to law school, they have JDs, they pass the bar, but they're, you know, they have all that debt that comes along with it. But the job that they do is really just reviewing documents all day and creating privileged logs. And so it does call into question sort of, you know, should there be a different certification for that that doesn't cost as much? Right? I mean, especially in such a high cost of living state like California, I think these folks are incurring a lot of debt to do a job that uses a very, a very small slice of the skills that they learned in law school.
Let me just say, that's a very interesting, and just to elaborate for people who aren't familiar with this, so these attorneys are typically on a totally different career path within the firm, from traditional associate attorney who's working his or her way up toward partnership. They typically make less money. They typically have a much more humane schedule, sort of nine to five, and so a lot of, a lot of them value that, actually. With the rise in technology, they often are not located in the higher cost areas. They might be located in sort of, much less expensive areas. And I will say, we have attorneys at my firm who do this function, they're called staff attorneys. And it is, one of the benefits of it for the clients is they are so good at what they do because that's their job, and they are very professional about how they collect documents, how they produce them. And it's never been considered the most exciting area of a law practice, but it actually is very important to how the system works. But Highland's connection of this, say, to the LL triple LT type function, is a very important one because I think you could conceive of a lesser level of training than JD to carry out these functions very capably.
Wouldn't be a lot of distinction between that and a paralegal, would it? I mean, paralegals aren't currently being trained in quite the way you're talking about, but it would be a very similar kind of education and qualification.
Kind of. It would be, well, be much higher, at least, at least in my experience, much higher level so that you can obviously have an attorney who specializes in document review and production make higher level judgment calls. And, you know, speaking of the triple LT, I think I mentioned to some of you that there, you know, there is an analogy in the medical profession. Because my husband's a physician, and one of the things I've learned is that physician assistants are, you know, becoming common in primary care practices, and they're very highly trained, and they can do a lot of the things that doctors do. And that's sort of, that's a potential model for us, so, and not comparable to the current legal assistance structure that we have in California where they can't really practice law independently of working with a lawyer.
But to play devil's advocate here, why, why would we study this? I mean, isn't this just the marketplace functioning? And we're not, we're not here to try to hold the, you know, the floodgates closed against the marketplace. So it's not really the focus that we're, I think, looking for. I mean, maybe it's a part of it. I don't know.
What I was hearing Highland saying about this topic is, we might learn from the market forces. In other words, the existence of staff attorneys to do the specialized function of document reviews tells you there's a market for those services at a lower price point than, for lack of a better word, you know, the sort of the full scope legal practice. And that might provide an opportunity for, you know, a better fit between cost and availability of services. Now, document review is so specialized, but that also may be a model. Again, it could be a useful model for triple LTs because you're looking at people who are highly trained and very capable in one particular function that's part of law practice. And the staff attorneys are much, I'll just say again, they are so much better at that than just your regular general's practicing lawyer like me, that we could, that's a free market model, but it could be useful for studies of alternative means of delivery. So anyway, just sort of brainstorming at this point.
And what I would say, Alan, is that the impact, it goes to, back to this issue of who, the, we're assessing the impact on whom, but there is an impact on the consumer. So it is the changing, the changes in the legal services market and how are they impacting the consumer? We had a little taste of that in the report that the board got from Professor Henderson, right? And you've seen the bubbles with the corporate, the business law market and the people law market, and the people law market is shrinking. But that's the ultimate impact, and that's why we care. So I don't know that we can change the market forces, but if you understand them, then maybe you can put in place some mitigation strategies.
Yeah. I guess what I'm struggling with a little bit is what we're probably all struggling with, and that is, it's really interesting to try to look into the future and anticipate things and try to make sure that we're ahead of the changes, or at least we're in a position to be predictive of the changes. But people's shelves are littered with studies looking 20 years into the future that, you know, are delivered and never read and collect dust. So I want to make sure that, and I'm in favor of following, you know, suggestion number two, I just want to make sure that we're going to end up with a focus that's going to be useful to someone, if nothing more than to be thought provoking, but at least useful in some way. So.
So I hope you took good notes. I think you're going to have to let us do some landscape analysis or survey of the literature in all of these areas that were raised and kind of convene, reconvene again when that's done.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think, I agree. I think the value of this meeting was to get together, kind of start a process, get at least of three major areas. We focused on one, which is at least a start. So my question is, how often do you anticipate this group meeting? Only in connection with board meetings or at other times in between? And how many, this is all difficult to, but if, to the degree you have any ideas on this, how many times do you think we're going to need to meet in order to get a deliverable put together by, was it May? May of next year? Because that's actually not that long a time. And I do agree that I think it's now time to turn it over to staff and say, you know, do what you can to prepare for the next meeting, whenever that is, so that we have a basis to go forward beyond that.
As someone who might be engaged in a literature review in the near future, I'm thinking that initially it would be useful to have a block of time. The, I think the November meeting is relatively early. This meeting was relatively late in the month, so we've really only got about a month and a half until the next meeting. I think that we would want to take advantage of that full amount of time before having our next meeting. After that, I can imagine having more frequent meetings, but I think just to begin getting the lay of the land, I think it would be useful to have a good solid six weeks or so. I don't know what your thinking is about that, Leah.
And I think we should plan on in-person meetings only being in conjunction with board meetings. And then if we're going to have additional meetings, we can do them by conference calls, the small group.
So when would you? When would you think that the next meeting would be?
Something in conjunction with the November board meeting.
Okay.
And.
November 9th, I think? Or 13th and 14th? 13th, I don't.
Well, the November board meeting, whatever that is.
Mid-November.
Yeah. And we'll try to schedule it a convenient time so that we're not requiring people to be here unnecessarily long. Any other thoughts from the committee before we adjourn? None? None? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.